...to make this city grow. One of the main questions we needed, industry. We now have two factories here in town. One of them is wanting to grow already, and I believe the other one's moving, they're starting to get their engine rolling good. Second of all, we've had housing growth. We've had people moving in, there's lots of people moving in, I've noticed, from California and all around New York. A lot of them are moving in here, majorly, so I think the city in all is moving forward. All in all, though, we need, you have to keep, look back at your history as you move forward, but at the same time, there's three, two to three people that's moving off of that council, and three of y'all are gonna be in there. As a leader, we're electing y'all to be our leaders. So when they drop the reins, y'all need to be ready to pick those reins up and keep that horse moving forward, and not try to look back and try to do something that we fixed from ten years ago. We need to keep moving all ahead. But, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Creasy real quick while he may have a little bit here, and I'm gonna go over everything with Ricky that I've talked about beforehand.
Good evening, and welcome to the Eighth Candidates Forum, sponsored again this year by the Westmoreland Area Chamber of Commerce and the Westmoreland News. We certainly appreciate your presence here, and we welcome the fact that you've taken a bit of your time to participate, either as an audience member or as a candidate. First, a few ground rules for the audience. We ask that you be active listeners, but please refrain from interruptions of candidates as they speak. To keep the forum orderly, peaceful, and meaningful, we ask that you show your approval or disapproval of a candidate at the ballot box when you cast your vote. And for the candidates, you will be asked to answer a series of questions which have been submitted by the public and prepared by a specially appointed committee of chamber members and the staff of the Westmoreland News. Each candidate will be given a maximum of two minutes to answer each question. At the end of the question and answer portion, each candidate will be given a maximum of three minutes to make a closing statement. Topics to be discussed this evening include: leadership and First Amendment issues, economic development and jobs, mayoral powers, condition of city streets, past criminal records and service to the city, purchase of new equipment, full-time firefighters, infrastructure topics such as water and the sewer system, and the casting of votes on civic matters that may conflict with personal beliefs. The unedited video will be streamed on the chamber's Facebook page, as well as the Facebook page for the Westmoreland News, to help voters of Westmoreland make informed and intelligent choices on Election Day. And if all is working well, this forum should be appearing on Facebook Live, courtesy of the media team for Lakeside Church, whose wonderful hospitality has enabled the use of their family life center for tonight's forum. Now, I wanna take just a moment to commend each of you on your decision to seek a position on the City Council. I'm sure your decision was not made lightly, and you have chosen to run with a desire to both help and serve the community, and I wish each of you the best of luck in tonight's forum, and again on Election Day. From my left to right, our candidates for City Council are Ricky Klein, Felicia Head, Alex Jones, David Leith, Evan Robertson, and Brian Smalling. Let's start off with a tough one. Mr. Klein, we'll start with you. Leadership and First Amendment issues. Members of the council and the mayor are public officials and subject to certain criticisms under the First Amendment. However, personal attacks have taken place on some local social media pages. What is your stance about posts on these pages? And where do you draw the line between criticism of a council member's vote and a personal attack? Two minutes, Mr. Klein.
I feel like as a city representative, we need the other water source. I have been told that there's a spring up toward Scotts that could supply us with all the water we need. I don't know what's happening. Somebody needs to follow up on this stuff. And I mean, it seems like we never finish a job. We get halfway through and we quit. But, as we receive our water from Gallatin, now we're at the mercy of Gallatin, basically. They can raise it any time they want to, and there's nothing we can do about it. And I think it's time for us, as the City Council, as a mayor, to go to Gallatin, sit down with these people. But we've got people up here that can't pay these water bills. They're on fixed income. I took a water bill in once that a lady had used 700 gallons. Her minimum was $2,000. We basically charged this lady 13 or 1,300 gallons of water that she didn't get. That would be like me going out here and getting a gallon of gas and paying five for five gallons. I wouldn't make that threat. She didn't think it was a threat.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Klein.
That is, that's where I want to do some, I've got time, I'm retired. So I got all the time in the world to do this. And if it takes going to Washington DC and talking to Marsha Blackburn, that's what we will do. I mean, that's just the way it is. We're gonna have to step up to the plate. They're not gonna step up for us. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head, do you need the question repeated, or are you?
Please.
Okay. Members of the council and the mayor are public officials and subject to certain criticisms under the First Amendment. However, personal attacks have taken place on some local social media pages. What is your stance about posts on these pages? And where do you draw the line between criticism of a council member's vote and a personal attack?
I feel like everyone is entitled to free, First Amendment right of free speech. In the modern age that we live in, social media is a big part of communication. Citizens are entitled to their ideas and beliefs that they have. You cannot control someone else's opinions. You must make sure you have taken the steps to make a good decision for the city when making them. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Head. By the way, I neglected to say earlier that the gentleman in red over there who's holding the cellphone up is in charge of our time, he's our timekeeper, so he will raise his hand once you have thirty seconds left in your answer, your two-minute answer. Mr. Jones, you'd like the question repeated, or are you good to go?
I think I'm good to go.
Alright, go ahead, sir.
The way I see it, everybody has a First Amendment right to say and speak as they please. You're entitled to your opinion. Our forefathers fought to give us that right, and it's not always necessarily a matter of if we have the right to say exactly what we think. It's more of a matter of whether or not we should say what exactly we think. I was brought up to consider other people's, the effect of what I say on other people. I was brought up to value my neighbor's opinion of me, and if I go shooting off my mouth and saying things that aren't necessarily considered savory to some people, shines a negative light on me, shines a negative light on my family. So it's not always a matter of whether or not we have the right to say exactly what's on our mind, it's a matter of whether or not we should say those things, period.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Leith, question, or are you good?
I'm good with it.
Alright.
I for one know how this affects when you get criticized on social media, and I believe in the First Amendment, freedom of speech. I believe in that. I believe a person has that right. As long as it's truth, but when they start, when they start telling lies and making stuff up and causing, and I felt it firsthand how it affects family members. I for one can take it, but now, when it goes to hurting my family, I think that's where I draw the line on that. But, there again, I think that they have the right to say, as long as it's the truth. Now, if I make, if I make a bad decision, then, then I feel like they have that right to criticize that bad decision. Now, when somebody just outright makes something up and starts telling stuff that ain't true, then there's where the line is drawn. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Robertson, you need the question, or are you good? Alright.
I too am a firm believer of the First Amendment. I believe everyone should have their opinion, and their opinion be heard. But I also agree with David, it needs to be the truth, it needs to be the facts. But, rather than putting it out on social media, if I've got a beef with somebody or y'all with me, I'd rather somebody come to me, if it's to put it out there and for everybody to start gossiping, and I just believe any personal issues should be left to decide.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Smalling, you good with the question, or you need it repeated?
I'm good with the question.
Alright.
I'm a firm believer that you get what you give. Time and time again, in the time that I've been involved in city government, I've, people have come forward and asked questions and voiced their concerns to council members, and they felt like they were being disrespected or not heard. And when, when you feel that way, you find another source or another venue to voice your opinion, and sometimes you're a little extreme, and sometimes you're not. But, where I draw the line and how you solve this problem, is when people come to address the council, you put your paper down, you put your pencil down, you look them in the eye, you acknowledge what they've got to say, regardless if you agree with them or not. You answer them when they speak to you, or ask you questions specifically, and you don't ignore them. And I've seen that, time and time again. But, the only way to stop it or to prevent it is right there in the council chamber. Give them the service they deserve as a citizen to come and have their voice heard. You're not gonna always be able to appease them with your answer or tell them what they wanna hear, but they do deserve respect, and you've got to be held to a higher standard. And that will go away. In almost twenty years that I've been doing this, I mean, I've been subject to criticism, sure, but not to the level that this question is in reference to, because I've exhibited that I can be kind and respect other people's opinions and still have difference of opinions with them.
Alright, thank you, sir. Well, the first question is over with. Leadership and personal beliefs, the next item we'll take a look at. Ms. Head, we'll start with you on this one. When casting your votes, is it more important for you to vote your beliefs on a matter based on the information and opinions you have, or is it more important for you to listen to your constituents who contact you and may have a different opinion? For example, a liquor store wants to locate in an area not currently zoned for such a business. You personally are against such a move, but a majority of people you've talked with are in favor of it being allowed, being allowed. So your answer there.
You should always listen to the concerns of the citizens. After talking to them and exploring facts, I would make my decision. For example, recently a property on Mill Street was requested to be rezoned. The citizens came to the city council meeting and voiced their concerns, including safety concerns. This state, these streets is not wide enough. I personally went and looked at the streets myself, spoke to the citizens. So in this case, I would not vote to rezone, because I feel their concerns were valid. I believe in listening to the citizens, and that's what I am running on this platform stating. It's time for your voice to be heard. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Jones, you need the question again, or are you good? Okay?
When I'm, if I get elected to the council, when I go to cast a vote, I believe the position of a councilman, first and foremost, is to be an effective representative for the people of the city. They cast the vote to get me elected to that position, so I have a obligation to those people to let their voice be heard and to represent their voice. On certain votes or circumstances, it may be required that I have to cast a vote that the citizens of the community don't necessarily have all the information for. At that point, it's asked of me to cast a vote based on what I believe the people's opinion to be. At that point, I have to make the most informed decision in and of myself that affects the citizens of the community in the most positive manner. That's the only way I would ever view voting, and if elected to the council. I'm never gonna vote to inconvenience someone if I can avoid it. I will always vote for the betterment of this community, for the growth of this community, to bring better jobs, better paying jobs with better benefits to this community, because the only way to better us all is to give us all those opportunities that afford us the abilities to grow in and of ourselves, not just as a community.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Leith, you good with the question?
I'm good with it, yes.
Right, yes, sir.
I'm like Mr. Jones, I would, we're elected by the citizens, the people, and we should listen, hear them. Not necessarily everything that, like Mr. Jones said, they might not know all the facts that we might know in voting. For instance, if somebody brought, I'll use the liquor store example, like y'all used, if somebody wanted to rezone so they could put up a liquor store, then I would want to go out and see how that's gonna impact that community to where that liquor store's gonna be at. I was just faced with the, with this situation not long ago, when we was hiring the chief of police. I received just as many phone calls for Officer Flat as I did for Detective Jolly. Same amount of people, number of people called me, so, you know, however I casted my vote there, it was gonna make somebody mad, but I had to go back and to their qualifications to decide how I was gonna vote, and the experience and education that each one had. And that's the reason I voted the way that I did there. But yes, I would, I would investigate and see how that decision's gonna impact other people, and I would vote, I would vote the betterment of the city.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Robertson?
I believe that any elected official needs to listen to the citizens or their constituents, that they're the one that elects them and puts them in that position, not that you may always agree with them. And as David said, they may not have all the facts that a member of council would have on an issue. But, on a rezoning, if it start with a planning and zoning, they would have to go out and look, and if they wanted to give you the recommendations of rezoning, then that would be brought up to the council at that time. Then I would always base my decision on what was legal and what was also best interest of the city. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Smalling?
I'm good, I'm good with the question.
Good, okay.
I believe that sometimes your personal beliefs are what get you elected, that people vote for the person that's most in line with the way they feel. And once you're elected, it's your responsibility to reach out to those people on certain issues to make sure you understand what they would like to see in the community. A lot of times, more often than not, they'll come to you about how they feel, and you won't have to search it out. But, in the instance that they're using for the example, as Mr. Robertson mentioned, the planning and zoning board would make the recommendation to the council based off the legality of the property being able to be rezoned, and if the developer met the criteria to be there, it would be really hard to deny those rights for them to have that rezoned other than for legitimate reasons like lack of infrastructure or money not available, as in such, as Ms. Head mentioned, like on Mill Street, to develop that road and the access to that property would be far beyond what the city could handle without causing more problems in the community later on down the road. So, basically, if it's legal for them to be there, you cannot deny them just because you don't want them next to you, you know, or those type of things. And I sit on the planning and zoning committee, so I understand that legality and how we're trained to make sure we follow all the rules and dot the i's and cross the t's to make things legal or not.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Klein, do you need the question repeated, or are you good to go?
Yes. Everybody knows my platform. I'm not changing. I've had people tell me they want it, I've had people tell me not to. I've had people tell me they want it, I've had people tell me they don't want it. In fact, the last time that liquor was voted in, I had two people that told me it don't bother me. They didn't say I want it, they said it don't bother me. Two. And we had over 300 that voted against it. I represented those 300. They have to be represented as well as anybody else. Am I right? I mean, I represent everybody, whether they love me or they don't love me. I'm still gonna work for them. That's just the way I am. And I wanna go back, 'cause I didn't answer the right question a while ago, about the social medium. I think social media is a good thing, for one reason, and I'm well aware, I'm on it, I know it. Criticism is a good thing. It keeps you transparent and honest. You know people are watching you. They watch you every day. What you do at the meeting, what you say, how you say it, and what you're gonna do, glor them or again them, they know. I know, I get a lot of phone calls and some of that stuff. But, if our social media goes, now I draw the line, when you get to lying, and I have had that done, so I've had it done to me, I know how I do, and what I think we all need to do, is back up a little bit and examine ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Why we're in this criticism. We might be wrong.
Thank you.
We're not all
You're out of time, and what you can do is, when we talk about the question with water coming up, you can continue that because you answered that water question to begin with, so I'll remind you of that when we get to that point. Mayoral powers is our next focused question, and we'll start with Mr. Jones on this one. Some have said the mayor has had his power stripped. Do you agree with his statement? If yes, how do you propose the council return lost powers to the mayor? And you might elaborate on what powers you think may have been lost.
I believe that the mayor should have all of the abilities that any member of an executive branch of government should have. The way it stands now, I don't feel he has the property, proper abilities to function as a true executive branch of government. He should have the ability to hire and fire his own head of departments. He should have the ability to place those people in positions and allow them to manage their departments on their own. I don't see any reason why it should have to go before a council for the hiring of a police officer, patrolman, or the hiring of a public works employee. If that position already existed and a member was terminated or left the position, if now you're left with an opening, his people should be allowed the opportunity to hire their own employees. That way, those department heads are invested in those employees more effectively. Same thing with Mayor Kirkman here, if he's allowed to hire his own employees, not the council members voting on hiring an employee, he has an investment made in that official, whether it be a police chief, whether it be a public works department head later on down the road. If we have a full fire department functioning that's full-time, if he votes to hire a fire chief, he has an investment at that point. But the way it stands currently, I feel he does not have the ability to function as a true executive branch and bring forth new motions to the council. The way I see it now, we have one head of government, and that is the council, and that's not the way that our founding fathers envisioned our body of government in America.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Leith, you good with the question?
I'm good with it, thank you.
Alright.
No, the mayor's power has not been stripped. Couple of years ago, we had Intas to come in here and do a upgrade, or do a upgrade, updated our policy procedure. And the HR consultant from Intas come in and updated our policy procedure, took out stuff that wasn't legal now, might have been legal then, stuff that we didn't have to have, and he found out that in this policy procedure we had, that it didn't coincide with our charter. Our charter since 1952 is like, is like the Bible to the city, the charter is, and the policy procedure can't override the charter, they have to, they have to match. So sometime or another, somebody changed the policy procedure allowing a mayor to hire and to fire. The charter says that a mayor can recommend hiring and can recommend firing to the council, but then it's the council's decision, council can accept that recommendation or they can make other choices. Charter also says that the mayor has votes on situations to break a tie. And he also has three other votes. He votes for the, votes for the city recorder as a council member, he votes for the city judge as a council member, and he votes for the city attorney as a council member. Other than that, he votes, he's a tiebreaker vote if there's a tie. So no, I don't think, I don't think the mayor's, I don't think the mayor, according to our charter, which is established in 1952, I don't think the mayor's power's been stripped. I think the policy, the charter and the policy are matched now.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Leith. Mr. Robertson, you good with the question, or you need it?
It's sort of hard not being in the current council to, you know, know all the facts on that, but it's, you haven't got, you know, I agree with what David said, from what all I've found out, there's been no power stripped from our mayor, no reflection on you, Jerry, or any former mayor. But in order to give power that's currently, that they don't have by the charter, then you'd have to rewrite the charter. As David said, I think it's been there since 1952, and it's always seemed to work. So, I would say just leave it the way that it is, let it be the council and the mayor to break the tie, if that's what's needed.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Smalling, you good with the question?
I'm good with it.
Right?
I'm gonna stand up and answer this question, because I'm gonna be the first person up here to say that in November, if I'm reelected to the city council, Mayor Jerry Kirkman will have as much power as Mayor Jerry Kirkman would like to have. I've served with Jerry since the very beginning of my entire, on the city council, and there's not one issue that he hasn't taken into consideration beyond his own beliefs and exhibited that's what's best for this community, and advised so directly to the council. These rules that Edwin and Mr. Leith has been talking about are constantly rewritten to suit whatever they feel is necessary. I've served under four different mayors over a very long period of time, and this was not an issue until the current group of people come and sit down at the table and said, and you can use all this, all the archaic language as an excuse, but, you know, we're talking about matching the policy with the charter. Well, that's true, those things were not in line. But then, you've made sure your charter said this, and then you turned around and wrote the policies and procedures to make sure it said it as well. But, when our mayor, as part of the charter, says he is a member of the council, the people that are electing that person are expecting those kind of responsibilities to come from the mayor to the council. And you've got to honor that and look at it that way, and you have to consider that he's the chief executive that advises on those things. And I mean, I've And I mean, I've been on both sides of this, and I know it's difficult to have the reinterpretation and everything, but in the future, if you give this man what he's expected, the people that are electing him expect him to have, and it's already been said that you don't want to pay a full-time mayor.
Are we good? I'm sorry, Mr. Smalling. Out of time. Mr. Klein, are you good with the question, or do you need it repeated? The mayor of powers.
I think we've got mayor's powers in this country. Now, when things go through the charter, the boundless man of charge, right, and I do. Our mayor was elected to be our... To be our leader, not our, not our follower. We are to follow him. That's, uh, that's what we, they elected him for. They wanted him to lead. But we go to this charter, he has the right to, if it ain't been changed since the one I read. He has the right to buy five thousand dollars in any emergency that he needs to without the council to approve. He also has the right to harm part-time people and put them up without the council to approve. And he also has the power to fire when he feels the need to. That is a part that seems to have been taken away from him. If, if, uh, an employee is not doing their job, he is the boss. He can't fire, according to the charter. He can appoint voters. Yes, we vote them, but he can't appoint them. He has that power. This is the charter, guys, this is what we go by. But to say, "No, the council needs to do all this, and the mayor doesn't need to be doing it," is wrong. It's wrong to do him, it's wrong to do citizens to vote for him. They voted for him to be mayor and be leader, not be follower. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head, we'll finish up with you on this question. Do you need the question repeated, or are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, uh-huh.
The people have elected the mayor just as the council is elected. For instance, the charter states that the mayor makes recommendations to personnel decisions. The city council may accept the recommendation of the mayor or take another action with personnel policy and procedure, if any, adopted by the city council. The current city council has changed the policy and procedure handbook and has removed the mayor's powers. I personally disagree with this, because the citizens expect the mayor to have some authority. The charter also states that the council is composed of the mayor and five ottomans. The present council proposed changes to the charter to remove the mayor's power. I strongly disagree with these changes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next question, water and sewer bills. Mr. Leith, we'll start with you. What kind of solutions do you have for Westmoreland's high water and sewer bills? Can you find solutions to lower the payments? And are there alternative water sources we should explore?
I said, "That's been a tough question for the last six years that I've been on the council." I don't know if water bills will ever go, get lower unless we can get Gallatin to lower their rates. We have explored alternatives, other solutions. We, we had a engineer come up and do a study about building a, uh, a water treatment plant. We found the source of water. Uh, like Mr. Klein might have mentioned here a while back, earlier tonight, about a spring or well over in Edge, Kentucky. And we had an engineer come out and do a study on that. And it turned out it was gonna cost twelve to fourteen million dollars to get that done. So that route wasn't feasible. So we, we co-op with, uh, with, uh, Castan, Castan and Best Page Water District. They've, they've been trying to get a permit to tap into the Cumberland, Cumberland River and was unable to get a permit, uh, to do that directly into the river. So they've been trying to, uh, we had several meetings on that, been trying to dig a well close to the river, so they can tap into it that way. And that hasn't panned out. So I don't know where that situation there stands right now, but we have searched for alternative methods of water. We, we do have, uh, a line from Lafette that we can hook to, we're only allowed so much water there from them, so hooking that, that line would be only an emergency situation. And the sewer, sewer bills? We're, we're in, we're in the process of trying to get a new sewer plant built, uh, which, uh, started out, I think, maybe like one point two million dollars started out, and it's no fault of anybody's here.
Okay, Mr. Leith, you'll have a opportunity to finish up, because there is a separate question regarding sewer, and all of you keep that in mind as you go. Water sewer bills, of course, are combined in Westmoreland, that's why the question is combined there. Mr. Robertson, do you need the question, or are you good?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Uh, sounds like, uh, based on what Keith was saying ahead of time about, uh, the solutions that had been solved within the city council and mayor for the last sixteen years, and water's been the big issue the whole time. I don't really have anything new to add to that. I, I had heard, I thought we was pursuing, uh, a deal maybe through Castan Springs and Portland, and Westmoreland were that, that we'd be able to have our own water source. You know, and try to, uh, get Gallatin to negotiate with us on the price. You know, anytime that you buy something to resale, then here it puts the city, it's like the middleman. But the money then that they'd make off of charging the consumer for the water, then that's what pays for the repairs and maintenance and, and part of the salaries when they have to go out and work on, uh, water lines. Really nothing new on, on that, but, uh, I agree, and that's what I've heard from a lot of citizens, that we need to work on trying to lower the water bill.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Smalling.
This is a very important question. It's a lot of information to convey in two minutes. The new council, once elected, will have an opportunity that the other councils in the past have not had. The state's passed some laws that require municipal governments that own utility districts, that they have to attend twelve hours of training and be certified, just like, uh, utility boards that are non-city-owned. That option's currently available as a volunteer basis right now. But to my knowledge, none of the, none of the sitting council members have took advantage of that class to learn some of these things I'm fixing to talk about. In, in this class, you not only learn the basics of the budgeting and the finances of a utility board, that, that you learn how your spending and everything will affect everything on the opposite end. We've had people come to us and talk to us about things like depreciation of funding and replacement of water lines and replacements of sewer plants and things, and having the money in place to take care of those things, you know, in, in the future. And, and we're on the cusp of those things happening right now. A lot of discussion's been taking place about doing these things, but a lot of things have not been done in the meantime. If you're gonna prioritize a sewer plant and put the money away, you, you only do the maintenance as required, as for safety purposes and as needed. And you sit there and you discuss the priorities, and, and you don't wanna spend any unnecessary money until you get into that circumstance where you know what you're gonna do. And I'm running out of time, but I wanna talk about natural processes in, in the treatment. The new plant will allow for some modern technology that can cut some serious cost. And we're on the cusp of that happening right now, and I'm looking forward to it. And we'll eventually see that, the better end of this in the very near future, I hope.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Klein, you good with the question, or you... This might be an opportunity for you to go back to that very first question, if you want, or if you wish to reiterate your answer on water sewer? Go ahead, sir.
I apologize, I'm getting a lot of echoing, so... You know, my hearing aid is kinda new, and this is like echoing on me.
All right, we'll start your two minutes now.
But we'll go back to the social media. Uh, I feel like that this is the only change that we've got to get our message out. I put messages on there about Jesus. I put messages, a lot of people watch what I put on there about stuff like this. This is my life. That's the way I am. When I got saved, I took it very, very, very seriously. And yes, we can talk about liquor, we can talk about beer, I've had that rode in me more times than you could dream of. Because I didn't stand for it. Any ordained minister or deacon or elder was standing with me on this. But people wanted it, and they voted it in. That's their business. If they wanna take it home and drink all they want to, that's their business. But now, when they get out here on the highway, that becomes a city problem. And far as the social media, yes, their stuff, but I'm, and sometimes I don't even agree with their language. But I get shot down sometime over the fear. If that's all you can hold against me, thank God for that. 'Cause I think I've done a well, good job. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head, the water sewer bill question? Do you need it repeated, or are you good to go?
I'm good, thank you. The mayor appointed two council members as co-chair of the water committee. They were to explore alternate water sources. Water for Kentucky was investigated, but expensive of a water treatment plant and pumps. In addition to the cost of buying the water was too expensive. Also, Kentucky is a Commonwealth state, which would allow them to stop the supply when they felt necessary. One way I feel we could help with water costs is to loop several dead-end lines, which must be flushed, often because of the chlorine. This wastes thousands of gallons of water and a lot of money. This is another way to stop wasteful spending, so we are not placed back under state mandated requiring us to raise water rates. We are required to meet the state standards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones, you good with the question?
Yes, sir. I think our first priority of business needs to be to start construction of the new water treatment facility as quickly as possible for our sewer system. Uh, I think another aspect of it would be to explore new revenue sources for the city to be able to offset the cost of having to build a new water treatment facility over here and to be able to offset some of the cost of loss from having to maintain our water system in the city. Uh, one of those things, if anybody's ever driven down Hartman Drive in Lebanon, you drive past Lebanon's water, wastewater treatment facility, and what do you see? You see a whole bunch of solar panels. I would reach out and touch base with their city leadership to find out how exactly all of that was paid for, whether or not there were government grants made available to them to be able to fund that program. But if we could get something like that incorporated to our wastewater treatment facility or to our public buildings, that would be a great source of revenue to add into our city's bottom line, to be able to offset those costs placed on our water consumers currently. Another purpose for placing a priority in getting wastewater treatment facility up and running as quickly as possible would be to be able to accommodate bringing in new industry, new business, so that way we can spur growth in our community. If we're spurring new growth and new business in our community, we're adding more tax dollars to enter our bottom line, being able to help offset some of those costs associated with having to build a new wastewater treatment facility and high water costs from Gallatin. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. We do one more question, or we... That's four, okay. All right, Mr. Simpson, are we, uh, we're gonna do one more, and then we take a break? Okay, I should have listened to your directions at the beginning. All right, next question, and we are ready for, uh, Mr. Robertson next with this first question. Of a similar nature, there have been plans in the works for a new sewer plant for years, but the matter has been caught in government red tape. How will you make a new sewer plant for Westmoreland a priority, and in the process, move the facility away from the city's baseball fields?
Okay, up here again, not tuned in to all the facts on the sewer plant, if somebody that's in there now, but I have heard, uh, that the newer sewer, new sewer plant is gonna run somewhere between six and seven billion dollars. Don't know if that's true or not, that's what I've heard. And, you know, if you try to get a grant, I think the max grant on that would be like five hundred thousand that you could get the help with that. I would wanna look at updating our system, uh, with newer, more efficient pumps and, uh, and maybe relocate the tanks, if that's what we need to do away from the ball field, or maybe it would be cheaper to look at relocating the ball fields. I do know, I've been familiar with the sewer plant at the ball fields for almost forty years, and I know it does smell. And, uh, and a lot of times it, it's disgusting, but, uh, I think just, that would be one, you're just gonna have to research and, uh, and try to make the right decision on it. But I do agree, we do need something new.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smalling.
As you spoke earlier, this is a situation that's come up quite a bit. I can't remember a candidate's forum where the sewer plant wasn't discussed at, with, at detail. One caveat is, I could not believe, sitting here today, that sixteen or seventeen years ago, that the better solution for the ball field would be to move the sewer plant away from the ball field. You'd think it would be cheaper, more cost-effective to do it the other way around. But not necessarily so. Uh, now, as far as the sewer plant goes and making it a priority, six, six years ago, Mayor Kirkman, when he was, took office, he come to the council and said the Tennessee Department of Environmental Services has come to him, made him aware of this problem. Prior to that night and those discussions, it hadn't been discussed in the public forum that there were issues. Previous councils were patching and repairing and making repairs and upgrades as they felt necessary. But the fact that our system was overloaded and not capable of being upgraded was not something that was on anyone's radar until Mr. Kirkman discussed it with us. And, um, he, he scheduled a meeting for the council members to go specifically to TDOT so they could tell us themselves what these problems that we had to rectify were. And it was a pretty heavy challenge to maintain, maintain the current plant, minimize your cost while making the required repairs, and put money aside to build the new one. Now, as far as the ballpark is concerned, there's a pretty good plan that I've seen to make those things happen and upgrade that facility. There needs to be, they know this is gonna happen. There's grants available that will help with that cost, because I'm sure they'll come and want more money from the city to help make those upgrades. And as part of those upgrades, I want everybody to remember too that, that our city parks are more than just ballparks. This ballpark should be for everyone, with walking trails and bike trails and all kinds of things.
Thank you, Mr. Smalling. All right, this question now goes to Mr. Klein, question regarding the sewer.
From two thousand and sixteen, I was going to go out and being the mayor and some of the other council members brought this forward, that we had to have a new treatment plant.
Oh, your mic? We'll restart your time.
We had to have a new treatment plant. So this went into works, and by the end of two thousand and sixteen, when I was voted off the council, I knew that we had worked down to where we could dig the ground and get the plan in. Here we are, four years later, no plan. Now, I've been at that treatment plant. I know what it looks like. It's outdated, and sooner or later, it's gonna shut down. Now, those guys are doing a good job, keeping it running. But it will go down, and it won't be, I mean, it's just outdated. And we just keep adding on and adding on and adding on to an outdated plan. It's got to be done, it's got to be started, it's got to be stayed up. Now, maybe some peat dragging done here. Uh, I feel like maybe the engineers done some peat dragging. Maybe our council did stay on top of it. But you got to stay on top of these guys, 'cause they're gonna slow down on you and fade away. Because they're going to slow down on you and fade away. They don't care. We're the ones that's going to have to care. The mayor and the five people sitting up there at that table are going to have to care. They're going to have to stay on them, call them, keep on them, till we get it done. We can't keep adding on these guys. We've already had a problem backgover. And if it happens badly enough, we'll pay dearly for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head, question regarding the sewer.
Plans have already been in the process for the sewer plant to be moved away from the ball fields. It took at least a year to secure the land from the IDB. Next, the engineer had to prepare and submit the plans to the state. Currently, the engineer are putting together a bid package. It is my understanding that the engineer will be giving an update on the sewer plant progress at the next work study. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Head. Mr. Jones, question regarding the sewer plant.
I was under the same impression that Ms. Head was, that the property had already been purchased for the building of a new water treatment facility. I know, what was it, four years ago? I think there was a, one engineering firm, and that firm fell through. Now, currently, there's a new engineering firm that's been hired, but we've got to set a definitive timeframe as to when we are going to start construction on this thing. We can't continue to just kick the can down the road or to avoid the topic or avoid the situation because it's, you know, controversial. I know my parents have an issue in their yard where they're having to call the public works once a week because of raw sewage backing up into their front yard. That's, that can't continue to happen. We've got to do something about it. We've got to take care of the wellbeings of the citizens of our community, and we can't allow raw sewage to back up in our streets. We've been through that. That was established in the French Revolution years ago. You can't continue to let that happen to your people. I think it's of the utmost importance to take care of our citizens and make sure that that's one of our top priorities, not purchasing new dump trucks, city works trucks, remodeling a council space, and building a new table that cost an exorbitant amount of money. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Leith will finish the sewer plant issue with you.
I made more of those trips with Mayor Kirkman down to T-DOT, T-Deck, and let them, and they explained the importance of building a new sewer plant. And they strongly suggested that we do that. Or there was going to be fines that were imposed on us that we couldn't afford. And I feel like the council, the current council, has been, has been in favor. We've not, we've not done anything to slow this process down. But I do believe that the, and I may be wrong, but I think the current engineering is the one we started out with. And I think they've drug their feet, and they've let some things fall through the cracks that's held this project up. And I mean, the land, the land was not purchased to build it on. The IDB gave the land back to the city, needed it back to us, so we didn't have to purchase the land to move it, to move it over away from the ball fields. And I'm all in favor of getting that thing away from the ball field as fast as we can. But yes, I feel like the, and the only way we're going to do it is stay on top of this engineer. We can't fire this engineer company right now because we've already paid for the blueprints, the plans, and we've got to let them see it through to a certain point. But we've got to stay on top of it and keep the fire lit up, and so they'll... And I think now that they've let the ball drop on some stuff, we've got, we're waiting on some, the Corps of Engineers, I believe, and some other organizations to issue permits. And they're not moving real fast. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Leith. All right, this is the halfway point in the forum. So at this point, we will take a break of a few moments, and then we'll gather back for the final five questions. Thank you.
If I can get everyone's attention, please. If y'all want to start making your way back to your seats, we'll get this party started again.
All right, welcome back to our council candidates forum this evening, and we will start off with our next question. I believe we will be ready for Mr. Smalling first on this question. I think that's correct. Question is, has to do with the subject of criminal records and service to the city. Should people with a criminal record be allowed to hold public office, be seated on a board, or hold a position as a city employee?
Okay. This is a difficult question for various different reasons. If you're a convicted felon, for example, there's rules in place that prohibit you from taking place in this governmental process. But now, to be seated on a board... The boards are tasked with responsibility of having a diverse group of people on them. A lot of the rules for a successful board or committee, that's a requirement. And you've got to use some common sense. Someone that's convicted or has problems with money laundering and stuff probably shouldn't be a treasurer to any group or any committee. Now, as far as being, holding a position for the city... I'm trying, I'm trying to write where to say it. You've got to be fair. The rules that are in place that says that you don't hire these people are in place for a reason, but you cannot say, "Well, this one's okay because I know why this person is this way." And to... That if you're going to hire these people, you've got to be fair. And you've got to hold all the employees to that same standard and not just overlook it for one and not the other. Okay, now I'm running out of time. As far as people being on the committees and stuff, a mistake that someone made 30 years ago shouldn't be held against them when they want to come and express their rights and have their view heard on any topic before the town. These people are not second-class citizens. They're part of our community. And you've got to use the common sense when dealing with these folks to, if their matter is going to be a problem or not.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smalling. Mr. Klein, question regarding criminal records and service to the city.
We've got level state laws that deal with this. Now, we can't be discriminating, but I know of two situations at the moment in Westmoreland. Like I said, we can't discriminate. And honestly, I don't think a police officer with a record needs to be a police officer. I'm, I'm just that a way. As far as the other situation goes, I'm not going to cast a stone over them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head.
The question addressed that people hold office, seat on a board, or is a city employee. So I would like to discuss city employees. During the past few months, we have had at least two incidents where city employees have been charged with a criminal act of assault. In a situation of this nature, the council must abide by a policy and procedure handbook. Section four of the current policy states, "If you are found to be convicted of a felony or misdemeanor dependent upon the nature and the gravity of the offense, the time passed since offense, and the nature of the job." This is the policy of the city, and this is in effect currently, and this should be followed or changed by the new council. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Head. Mr. Jones?
I think anytime you've got an employee that's, you know, got a criminal record or has done some action that's gotten them charged with a crime, you're, you're put in a sticky situation. I mean, you, you caused the personal, individual's character into question. It basically makes it, I, I, I think it makes it where you have to look at it on the individual, individual level, the severity of the crime that had taken place. I, I mean, you can't hold everybody apples to apples when it comes to a criminal record because there's various different types of crimes that take place. I, I think you, I mean, you, you walk a fine line in terms of discipline whenever you do that. I mean, if you rule with an iron fist, you end up taking your employees down to, you know, their morality, morale levels down to rock bottom. You lose any type of workforce buy-in. You, I mean, you could. Not necessarily always the case. I mean, some military situations, guys have a iron fist rule, and they get great respect from their guys. Private sector areas, sometimes you lose complete buy-in from your workforce. I, I mean, you, you've got people working in fear of losing their job on a daily basis. Whereas on the other hand, if you rule with compassion, you're allowing reckless behavior to take place. You establish a trend of that type of behavior within the workforce. But ultimately, I think in a city situation, it comes down to what type of liabilities you're opening your city up for. Our city's not in a financial situation. I don't know many cities that are in a financial situation to open themselves up to any kind of financial liability of that sort. And I think you have to take that into huge consideration moving forward with any decision the city's faced with.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Leith?
Okay, the question asked here, should a criminal record be allowed to hold office, be seated on a board, or hold position in the city? And my take on that is, I believe if a person has done something in their past that has caused them to lose their right to vote, should not hold office, should not seat on a board, and shouldn't be, have a position in city business. That being a felony criminal record.
Thank you, Mr. Leith. Mr. Robertson?
Okay, by law, if I'm not mistaken, that, that it is not allowed for those people to register to vote. So therefore, I feel that they should not be able to hold no public office or sit on a board. Far as being able to be employed by the city, I think that would have fall back then on the nature, whatever the nature of the crime was, and think it should be looked at on an individual basis. But if the city has a policy that, you know, that states that we hire no felons or people with records, then we need to stick to that or change it one. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next question, and this one will go first to Mr. Klein, I believe. And this is a question regarding full-time firefighters. Mr. Klein, what is your position on the possibility of having at least two full-time firefighters in Westmoreland? And how will you pay for their salaries if you were in favor of such a service?
Okay. As far as the firefighters go, this is something I've always wanted.
Oh, Mike, your microphone, Mr. Klein.
Just Mike will get you going. I've always, I was on the bar department 13 years. I've always thought we need two firefighters. We never could afford him. And we still can't afford him. I mean, I, I would love to see it. It's a good thing. These guys do a great job, but sometimes you ain't got sleep on a media call. They could be somewhere else. They could be at work. I've had to leave work in Galton. Yeah, it would be a good thing, but then we have to look at the cost and where that money's coming from. And I don't think you're going to get a grant to pay for a full-time fireman. It's going to come from the citizens. Can they stand it? Can they, can they afford to pay any more than what they're paying? I, I just don't see it. We've got people on fixed incomes here that can't even pay the water wheels. And they can't pay nothing else. They're doing good to pay the bills. I know what you're talking about. I get calls all the time about this. But I am going to say I'm going to do one thing. If I'm elected back to this council, I'm going to take my city check and I'm going to put it in a fund to help these people pay them water wheels. They're not going to get their water wheel cut off. I mean, I'm just, I feel that way. I offered this before. This time, I'm just going to do it. I'm going to say I'm going to be doing this job for nothing because my check will go into an account to help these people pay their water wheels. I think that's the right thing to do.
All right, Mr. Klein. Thank you for your answer. Ms. Head, question regarding full-time firefighters.
I do feel that we need two full-time firefighters. We have applied for a grant to pay their salaries for the first year. Their salaries would be the same pay as a police officer's. We would know this going forward and must budget to pay their salaries after that. It would be necessary to look at other ways to cut the budget so we could fund this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Head. Mr. Jones?
I'd be in support of having two full-time firefighters, but like the other two here, I, I don't think there's any way right now without making the cut somewhere else, you can afford to do that. I feel like if you're going to do that, you're going to have to cut two positions from somewhere else in order not to create more of a burden for the people of Westmoreland. I don't see any reason why I would, why anybody would be opposed to having two full-time firefighters in our community. That's only going towards the safety and well-being of anyone who's trapped in a fire, has had a car accident, and needs the support of those, those gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Leith?
I too agree on having two full-time firefighters. And our fire chief has applied for a grant that will pay the salaries the first year, and then the next two years pay so much of their salary. We're starting to start matching, I believe that's correct. And I'm in favor of, of looking to, I mean, we would, after the third year, we, we would be fully funding those two firefighters. I believe with the increasing our revenue up here, our sales tax revenue, we'll have increase of property taxes. I believe we can find, this board can find a way to fund those firefighters, and yes, I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Robertson?
Okay, I do agree with the two full-time firefighters, but when you look at two times 24/7, that means you need six employees. You keep working around the clock. So I also heard that it is a grant out there that will, that will pay for their salaries or partial salaries. And I think if I'm elected to the council, I know that I will work diligently to try to find a, some way that we can fund. They used to have some full-time firefighters, whether it be two, four, or six. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Smalling, we'll finish with you with the question, full-time firefighters.
I agree we need two full-time firefighters, but the problem is, two type, two firemen are what it requires just to show up to a fire. So this grant that the city's applied for three times now, I believe, we finally were awarded the grant. We put the programs in place and got our data in line with what was necessary to receive that funding. And some of the other candidates have talked about, what do you do after that funding runs out? Well, it, it's good budget process to put that money aside now for later. So when this money is over with, that you can, you'll know what it's going to cost, and you'll have it there readily available. But now, as far as growing and expanding the program to include four, eight, 12, or how many more firemen you want to put, put in the full-time position, that's a position that the council has a problem with in the past of setting a priority up for a future council that they didn't make that decision. They don't take ownership of those problems, and then they go another direction. That's the only problem I see with this. It's a commitment that we, if made today, three years down the road, we'll have a problem unless we make it a true priority. And that means, as others have said, something else will have to suffer unless the growth and development, all the other things fall in line to cover those expenses in the future.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smalling. Next question, I believe, we'll start with Ms. Head on this question. Condition of the city's streets. With all the streets in Westmoreland in desperate need of repaving, and with this being a costly endeavor, how do you plan on getting our streets paved, and from where will the funds come?
We've got a lot of streets that need to be paved. A lot of...
This, we're going to start with Ms. Head on this question, Mr. Klein, and we'll wind up with you on that question. So Ms. Head, your question, your answer to the question.
Paving is paid out of the general fund. You must plan. An engineer firm was hired two ti- two times in the past two years pre, excuse me, two years to provide us with a list of streets needing paving based on priority. I feel we should start with the streets in order of priority and not choose which ones we want personally. For example, Sumner Drive is number 42 and 43 on the list, and the current council voted to pave it. What they, what they're paying to pave Sumner Drive could pave the top four roads on the list instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Head. Mr. Jones?
I think what you've got to do whenever you start addressing the paving and road repairs, you've got to sit together as a council and devise what roads would be your top priority. You've got to take into consideration not necessarily just the condition of the road, but, but the amount of tra- traffic that is traveled via those roads. So where Ms. Head says that Sumner Drive may be number 42 and 43 on the list, during school hours, that road may be one of the most trafficked roads in our community. So I think that is something that has to be taken into consideration as well. But what the council has to do is to sit down and develop a hierarchy of what roads are top priority, what roads are second priority. what roads are second priority, third, and so on and so forth. At that point, the roads that are top priority, we pave this year. What we can't afford to pave this year, we push to next year. And you make your way down that list, or hierarchy of roads, in terms of condition, including traffic. And over time, we'll get our ways back to having our roads back to an acceptable level, where people don't have to drive down the road holding a cup of coffee and worry about spilling it in their lap.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Leith?
We do have bad streets here in Westmoreland, and we did, we hired an engineer, the engineer firm to come up and do an analysis. And they did give us a list of streets and the priorities, which ones they thought was worse. And we got thirteen, thirteen point six five miles of streets that they say need to be paved. And they also give us a solution to it. We can issue bonds over the next twenty years and start paving these streets. A million-dollar bond issued would cost the city five thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars a month to pay it back over the next twenty years. Now, by the time we get the twenty years paid off, they'll probably be ready to be paved again. But that's the solution. I would be in favor of paving all these streets on a bond issue. That payment can easily be made through the general fund. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Leith. Mr. Robertson?
Okay, I agree on that end about the mayor's currently working on trying to secure that one to one and a half million dollar bond to pave their streets. And I think that's the way to go. You know, if it took ten years to pay it and you needed to repave again in ten, so you took care of what needed to have been done at the time. Even though a certain amount's allotted each year in the budget for paving, it's just not enough to get around to all of them. Understand that we've got quite a bit of money in our reserve fund, that if we had a road that just terribly fell apart, that we could take some money out of that and be able to pave that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Smalling?
The list of streets and the priorities and the orders in which that they need to be paved is an important recommendation. We paid for that recommendation. We should follow that recommendation. And the question about the bond issue note, that's something that come up years ago. And with interest rates and fees being so high, it was just unattainable. And as Mr. Leith talked about, the expenses now seem to be falling in line to be able to do that effectively. But one of the concerns that I have is, if you borrow a million dollars and you go through the governmental red tape of acquiring the million dollars and then engineering those projects, you know, you might need two million dollars at the end of the day and can only pave half of what you initially paid, wanted to pave, and you didn't accomplish the whole gamut of the project. And you might only wind up paving one road, two roads, when you've got fifteen others or twenty others to pave. That's the only problem I see with following that subscription. But in the past, there's been things happen, like taking money out of the reserve fund to pay for emergency road repairs or pave certain roads in their entirities when just only certain parts of the road were deemed necessary to be fixed. And I'm excited to think that there's a solution on the horizon that will take care of this problem for our citizens. And it'll help how the people from outside our community view Westmoreland if that problem is taken care of, just like the water in the sewer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smalling. Mr. Klein, we'll finish with you. Again, the question is the condition of the city's streets.
I'll just give you, I'm glad Ms. Woodard's here so she can hear this. We had an offer once before. It was a mistake. The council should have, have did. I had an offer to pave every road in town at a interest rate that you wouldn't even believe. And they paved one and a half roads. If we would have went through with this, the roads would be paved now. And it would have been probably paved before. But we're gonna have to go back to square one again. You ain't gonna get many grants right now the way the government's running. It's gonna take a loan. And it needs, we need to make a long plan to get these roads all paved, not just one or two here yonder. That's never gonna get the job done. And when we do do it, do it three inches deep. We have roads paved out here right now that's a half inch. That won't last. It just won't last. Water gets under it, it'll bust it up. It's nothing there. And we're riding them, and we've got some sewer places out here that's covered with a half inch right in the middle of town. I mean, I'm just looking for a day a car falls in it. Do the job and do it right one time. And we're gonna have to take a loan. We already know that. We're gonna have to place it. That's facts. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. All right, our next question regards purchase of new equipment. Mr. Jones, you alluded somewhat to this earlier. You will get this first opportunity to answer this question. The city is often in need of new equipment for public works, plus new police cars, fire equipment, and so forth. Those items can be expensive and difficult to fund. As an example, a new dump truck costs two hundred thousand dollars and can be used for ten years. A five-year-old dump truck with two hundred thousand miles costs one hundred thousand dollars, has no warranty, and should last five years. Which truck would you recommend the city to buy and why?
I'm gonna take a different approach on this, and I'm gonna go with a scenario that's facing our city. There's rumors floating around about the purchase of a new trash truck. One that automates the pickup of trash waste outside of each person's home. Uses an arm, picks it up, dumps it in the hopper, drops your trash can back down, goes on about its way. Reduces the number of manpower that would be three currently down to one required to run the vehicle. And also takes, you know, strain and physical strain off of our public works employees. You know, those are the pros for that. The cons, that's a high-priced trash truck, and every person in the community is gonna have to purchase a new trash can or multiple new trash cans based on their needs. We currently have a perfectly working trash truck. Works great. They do a great job with it. Mayor Kirkland stepped in in his time of need and did a great job performing that service using that trash truck. I don't know why you would propose that at this current time with our current financial strains on our community. Last year, or this year currently, I guess you'd say, we received a hundred thousand dollars from the state in a hall tax. That hundred thousand dollars was not earmarked towards any project. What did we do with that hundred thousand dollars? We blew it. We could have taken that hundred thousand dollars and applied it towards our paving of our roads, fixing our infrastructure, repairing our sewer plant. Could have put that towards the spurring along our engineering company to try to get that process sped up. But what did we do? We blew it. Wasted it on something that in five years, probably gonna be wrecked. One of the trucks has already been wrecked multiple times, and we've had to file insurance claims for.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Leith?
I want to say I would prob, I would go with the, with the new truck. And the reason I would go with the new truck is you get four years of warranty. And buying a used vehicle, you don't know what you're buying. You're buying somebody else's troubles. And just one breakdown on a truck, a big truck, a dump truck, could be twenty to thirty thousand dollars, just one repair. And we had this example last year. We did get referred to what Mr. Jones told. We did not blow that hundred thousand dollars. We put it toward the purchase of a brand-new dump truck. We already had money allocated for it, so we, our, and we was looking for a used truck. That was our plans. But then our public works supervisor got a quote or bid on a brand-new dump truck, just like the one we've got, for eighty thousand dollars. That's four years warranty, and the dealership told him at that time, at the end of that four years, no more miles than we put on that dump truck, that the trade-in value would be fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That makes sense to me to do, that's saving money there. No, four years of no repairs. And at the end of that four years, you traded in for fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, and you've got four more years of no repairs. Yes, I would go with the newer vehicle, and that's why.
All right, thank you, Mr. Leith. Mr. Robertson?
I also would go with the newer vehicle. I questioned the two hundred thousand. But David said it was about eighty thousand dollars, and definitely would go with that so you wouldn't have that many repairs. As far as the police cars, you take it into effect, the same scenario there. When they was buying the old wore-out cars from Sumner County Sheriff's Department, they stayed at the shops more than they stayed on the highway. And as us being a city, we owe our, how to mine blank? We owe the citizens, we have to give them X amount of service. And if you don't have the right equipment or cars, it's gonna break down or whatever, not make it to a call if somebody gets one. You know, and then even you take the officers or the public works, their safety. You know, I know in years gone by, if police cars were running around this town with wire hanging out of the tires, and I know that for a fact, so. But that's also, I think we're over that now, and that was probably a budget issue. But still, I would say go with a newer one with a warranty and should pay for itself unless repairs.
Let me say that the numbers that were supplied here, as far as the cost of the truck, were the numbers that were in the question. I've not verified those independently or anything like that, but, but point well taken there regarding the cost of it. Mr. Smalling, your question, purchase of new equipment.
Well, I've been on the council when most of the modern equipment that the city has has been purchased. And given the opportunity to purchase a grant, to purchase a warranty, obviously you do so. But as a member of the board, you have to make sure that that piece of equipment's not a frivolous purchase, that our city employees that are requesting this purchase, most of the time, I take their recommendation. But I'm gonna make sure, for example, we bought the first brand-new fire engine that we'd had in a number of years. And if this was the first year that I served on the board, it come up fairly quickly that that's something that they wanted to purchase, the first night even. And knowing that my vote was the one that was gonna make the difference in the matter, I think we took a year and discussed it and made sure that was the right decision, that that's what we done. I visited the other fire halls and looked at similar equipment to make sure that it wasn't just what they told us it would do, that that was what we needed and that's what would be required. And same way with patrol cars, backhoes, dump trucks, all those purchases over a period of time are so burdensome for the citizens that you have to look at it, make the best purchase possible, and not waste the dollars. And I also question that, like, is our public works, are our police officers wanting a piece of equipment for safety? Are they trying, are they just wanting a toy? Do they use the tool in their job enough to warrant those types of expenses? You can buy a two hundred thousand dollar dump truck. You may not need a two hundred thousand dollar dump truck, but you could get by with an eighty thousand dollar dump truck. It can be brand-new, and I support those purchases. But the difference between the want and the need and the priorities for the citizens is something I take serious.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smalling. Mr. Klein, the question is yours regarding purchase of new equipment.
I realize now we need good equipment. I realize that. But I was amazed at a two thousand dollar truck. It's gonna last five years, ten years. Now, come on, a new dump truck, a two hundred thousand dollar dump truck should last you thirty years if we'd stuck here. That's the way I feel about everything. Take care of it as you treat your own. But I've seen some of our trucks. I've actually seen how they're handled, shovels being thrown at them. Now, our employees need to start handling our equipment as it's there. I'm not gonna raise taxes to buy equipment. Our tax rate right now is higher than anybody in the middle of Tennessee. And no, I'm not gonna raise taxes on these citizens because nobody will take care of their equipment. It's not fair to the citizens. It's not fair to anybody. Yes, you get grants. You get some grants. We got a grant, got a bar truck, got a bar hall built, and we got a pickup truck. That pickup truck was supposed to have been a truck and trailer with a grabber on it to pick up the limbs. But we didn't get that. We got a pickup truck. See, we don't follow up with what our grants call us for. We need to take care of our stuff. Don't be running over everything. One of the new trucks got the tailgate banged up, backed into a tree. I mean, and I didn't even know that till I run up on it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head, we will finish the question with you regarding purchase of new equipment.
Well, with this question, it's discussing the dump truck, and I'm not gonna talk about the dump truck. I'm going to address something that we're facing as a city over right now. It depends on what the city has allowed in the budget and set forth. Department heads need to be required to prepare a budget to present to the city council and show their needs based on their priorities. The department head should be required to provide documentation to show their needs, not because of what their wants are. There is a difference between wants and needs. In matters of a three hundred thousand dollar fire truck, we could purchase, we could pursue grants to access in the purchase of a vehicle of this magnitude. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Head. Our final question of the evening focuses on something near and dear to a lot of folks in our community, manufacturing jobs and tax incentives. Mr. Leith, you'll have the opportunity to answer this question first. Like many small towns, Westmoreland is in need of more jobs for its citizens. A new company contacts the city and wants to bring its manufacturing facility to Westmoreland, bringing with it one hundred good-paying, full-benefit jobs. The company wants forty acres of land from the city on which to locate the plant and ten years of tax abatements and exemptions. If such a proposal were brought before the council, how would you vote and why?
Well, to begin with, Mr. Creasy, the city as a government body cannot offer incentives. It's against the law for the city to offer incentives for companies. So what I would do there, I would turn the matter over to the IDB board and let them negotiate it. But I would still be in favor of them giving them tax breaks for X number of years and offering them a spot to build their factory, to have those jobs. So that's why we established IDB board to make incentives like that. And they've done an excellent job in doing that. They brought in the lumber company over here, brought in Clayton Homes. The city council worked with them and Forward Sumner to bring those jobs. One Clayton Homes is gonna have two hundred jobs eventually. Wilson Lumber, they've got twenty-five to thirty, and they're wanting to expand. So that's how I would handle that situation there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Leith. Mr. Robertson?
My opinion on this one is that, no, first of all, I don't think the city has forty acres available to give them, even if it was legal. You know, the companies purchase their own land. I think the county usually gives them some type of tax breaks, maybe up to five years. And I would support that whatever, we match with whatever the county would do. And I do agree, we need, we need some more businesses in here, but you can't give them, can't give them all you got. can't give them, can't give them all you got. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Smalling?
Just like the question about the rezoning, where the zoning board makes the recommendations to the city council for the rezoning, I feel like the industrial development board would make that recommendation to the city to accept that proposal, uh, for whatever the law legally allows. And having two good examples exist under our belts now, and knowing that that's the way that it works with the state, and that's what should be done, it's, it's proved to be advantageous for us, and if we build on that and do one, two, three more deals, similar to that, it, it could be a bright future for Westmoreland, and, um, I'm in favor of it, and I support it, but when I say I support it, I wanna talk a little bit about something. Uh, several years ago, the city decided that they wanted to purchase the old Fleetwood facility and turn it into an expo center, and we tried to make that work for a good period of time, and a lot of the citizens wanted that done in the community, they wanted the events at the expo center, but, uh, the industrial development board came forward and said, "We can't make this work, it's costing us a lot of money." And, but the citizens still wanted that event center, and I sat down with the chairman of the industrial development board, and he had his numbers for me, and he showed me what the expectations was, and how the finances weren't making it. And I had seen that he had done his homework and was doing what he was supposed to do, and, and since that time, I've had a lot of faith in him to follow through with that process, and it's working. And I'm not turning my back on what the citizens want, and I'm not gonna give away the town for a business that may come with a promise, but it showed that it works, it will work, and I have faith that it will continue to work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smalling. Mr. Klein, question back to you regarding manufacturing jobs and tax incentives.
Well, in our day and time, if you get a factory, you're gonna have to give something. I mean, that's just the way, way the world is today. Yeah, I would be willing to give them some incentives now, I don't know about going that deep with it. We don't wanna get in the situation Portland has got in. They've got in so deeply, that they're, they're in debt. They're not making anything off some of those factories. Some of them have just started paying property taxes here in the last couple of years. Uh, you know, we don't wanna go too deep that we can't bail ourselves out. Uh, yeah, I believe we give them some incentives, maybe, uh, you know, tax, no tax rates for five years, but if we're talking about forty acres of ground, we gonna have to supply it too. We have to look at that. Uh, yeah, I believe we could, uh, I would, if I could look at their plan, and explore and look at what they're doing, and what kind of jobs are they gonna supply us with? I mean, I just come in here and say we're gonna place some top jobs, and you end up paying five dollars there, pack up and leave in a year or two and leave you hanging. That's been done in Portland. Uh, we really need to look at this before you start giving, uh, we need to look at how much we're gonna get, 'cause we're gonna have to supply them with water and probably at a lower rate, and I don't know if we can do that, right, not right now, and with our water problem. But sure, it would be worth, worth looking into. If somebody wanted to put a factory in here, I'd be jumping up the jolly, if, uh, if we could, you know, afford to get them here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head will have the question to you now.
State law says, Westmoreland City Council cannot negotiate contracts with the industry or retail companies. For this reason, the industrial development and retail boards exist. These boards are an arm of the city that is made up of citizens and taxpayers, and are set up by state standards. State law mandates that no elected official can be on the board. The IDB is required responsible for negotiating with new industrial and retail. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Head. And Mr. Jones, we'll finish this question with you regarding manufacturing jobs and tax incentives.
I'd be in full support of it, uh, and here's the reason why. So if you've got a hundred new jobs being supplied in your community, that's a hundred families that are affected by those new well-paying jobs with full benefits, let's say half of those hundred jobs are from out-of-towners, and they're gonna be moving closer to their job. They're gonna either be buying houses here, or they're gonna be building houses here. If they're building houses here, they're investing in their property in Westmoreland. With that investment in our property in Westmoreland, their property assessments go up, which means we get, we draw more tax revenue from that. With that tax revenue, then we're able to offset the cost of other things, we're able to do things with our roads, we're able to do things with our water treatment facility, we're able to do things with our ballfields, we're able to give playground equipment to our kids. I think it's a great idea, just for that purpose alone. Secondly, when you bring in all these well-paying jobs into our community, you're bringing in extra revenue to be spent by those people who are moving into your community, who live in your community, who are affected by those new jobs. With more money to be spent, all of our local businesses, revenue increases, maybe our downtown district has businesses open back up into it, they're able to sustain business because we've got more income in our community's pocket, that they're able to go and spend into those, in, into the downtown business district. I'd love to see something like this happen, where we're able to get a downtown business district that's buzzing again, to where Westmoreland is a hotbed, and it's back to what it used to be, back in the heyday of Westmoreland. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Now, this concludes the, uh, the set questions that were given to you beforehand. What we will do now is enter into our closing remarks, that each candidate will be able to, uh, finish off with, and what we'll do is limit that to three minutes, you have up to three minutes in which to do that, and Mr. Robertson, we will start with you, so your closing statements.
Okay, if I would like to, to just say again, I would like to do it my turn. I would bring to it each time honesty and integrity. Uh, I have the love for this town, I'm a lifelong resident here, raised my family, and now my grandkids are here. I, I think Westmoreland is a great place to live, we have great schools, but we do need growth, uh, to continue, that would help solve a lot of our problems. Make smart decisions based on the best for the city, research the topics that's at hand, and vote accordingly to what is, what is legal and right. And also remember that, that as long as we are a city, there are certain services that we have to provide in a timely manner, where water, sewer, police department, et cetera. Uh, what would qualify me for this? I've had forty-one years in retail management, I've, uh, been a supervisor over at least twenty-one stores at one time, rate averaged from eighteen to twenty-one, each store with ten employees, that's twenty-one hundred employees, I've heard a lot of problems. Uh, each year, had to do a line out on budget, so I've got familiarity with budgets, I know, know how, how you have to look at them, and, and how you have to do them. But, uh, you have to run the city, it is a business, but you have to run it like it's your business. So I look forward, uh, with y'all's help, to serve on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Smalling, your closing statements.
Let's see, where do I start? I've been involved in the city government for a long time. When I was twenty-seven years old, I made a decision that I wanted to do something besides just earn a paycheck, or, you know, have a job. It was an easy decision for me, um, I decided I wanted to be on the council, but beyond being on the council, I wanted to be a voice for the citizens, and I wanted to be fair and educate myself on how to do these things, and not just take my opinion into consideration. And I, I feel like in the past, I've exhibited that, I feel like I've worked hard to do that. Um, I've had the fortune of being elected to the council, I've had the fortune of losing some elections to the council. But, uh, I'm here today because of a commitment I made a long time ago, to try to continue to serve, do the best I could to represent everyone. Don't always have the right answer, don't pretend to have the right answer, uh, but I'd like to think that I can get the right answers, I can learn what's necessary, and I can communicate the information that's needed, as necessary, for everyone to be on the same page, to make the commitments that our citizens deserve. Um, some of my earliest memories are something that's instilled with me about public services. Interesting, I can be, I can remember being five and six years old, and doing my homework in the back of the council chamber, or under the desk at the police department, and hearing these conversations that oddly enough, thirty-five, forty years later, are still coming up. And it's so funny to think that, you know, I can remember that from five years old, and it's still relevant today, or I have the answer that no one in the room, uh, knew anything about, something that happened thirty years ago. They talked about, um, for example, the, um, consolidated dispatch, that's something that was discussed over thirty years ago, no one could fathom, walking into the police department, picking up the phone, and ask for your service. They didn't believe it was good ideal at the time, but over time, that process evolved, and, and here we are, you know, in the time that I've been here, we've purchased new equipment, we've upgraded, we've modernized, and we've tried every way to be a modern government, and, and I want to be re-elected to where the people's voices can be heard, and they can be a part of this process, and make our town greater. I want our downtown district and everything about it to thrive. We've had talked a lot tonight about the future, well, the people that are now, that are there now deserve that same level of commitment from their elected officials. And it's not a decision I made to say, if I serve, if I'm elected, I'll serve, it's a lifestyle that I've committed to.
Thank you, Mr. Smalling. Mr. Klein, your closing statement, please.
I'm a lifetime resident, sixty-two years in Westmoreland. I've got three daughters, seven grandkids, and one great-grandson, they live here too. I want a future for them, I want them to see Westmoreland as I seen Westmoreland. When I was growing up here, I seen a lot of things in town, everything was open. I mean, we had the fall festival, we had stuff like this going on all the time, like we've got the, uh, Halloween thing now. And why can't we go back to those days? There was a lot of people here from out of town, but we're gonna have to go to, come together here. You do know that our town is split, and I'm telling you, I wanna bring it together as one. Now, a divided town is not gonna stand the Lord's city way. We're gonna have to come together, all of us, whether we like each other or not, we're still gonna have to come together for our kids and our grandkids. Now, the world is turning bad, and we don't want it here, I don't want it here. I don't know how long I've got to live, but I wanna see my town do better, and it's not doing better. I do a lot of criticizing, because it is not going forward, we're going backwards. We're losing our, our vision. Now, I got a vision for Westmoreland. We used to have revivals over here in the middle of town. People were packed all over down the streets. We don't have anything like that anymore. We very seldom have a revival out of church. Have we forgot who put us in? I'm not coming here to preach to you, I'm just telling you that we are gonna have to go back to the older days, and be what the older people set us an example for. We're losing our sight, we're losing our vision, and it's slowly falling away. It's not good for my kids, my grandkids, it's not good for yours. I hope you vote for me, you know, with me. But if you don't, and you think these guys could do better, that's what you do, you vote for them. I've been here a long time, I'm not here to raise your taxes, it was not a question here, but I've raised it two or three times. Last year, last year alone, you were a very few percentage points away from having a tax increase. You remember that? A big few.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Head, your closing statements.
I would first like to say thank you to Mr. Creasy, to the Westmoreland Chamber, the Westmoreland Newspaper, and to Lakeside Church for hosting this event this evening. I hope you would give me the opportunity to serve on the city council. With me attending the meetings for four years, I have witnessed many things, wasteful spending, disrespecting, and disregarding the citizens. We have to start working together and listen to the citizens and your concerns. I will stay, I will stay in the budget and hold people accountable for their actions. As my platform states, it's time for your voice to be heard. If you vote for me, I will make sure your voice is heard. It's time for you, the taxpayers, the citizens, to have a voice. I would like to say thank you to everyone attending tonight, and thank you for everyone viewing from home. Remember, get out and vote November the third. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Head. Mr. Jones, your closing statements.
I grew up in this town, and, uh, played ball in this town, was in the band at this town, made mistakes in this town, and have come home and still making some mistakes, but I'm hoping to do a lot better. Uh, my grandparents were heavily invested in the community here. My grandfather was so invested in the community here that he decided to come back here and spend forty years working his life away to give back to this community. He served on this council, he served on the tri-county board, he served on the school board here, or in Sumner County. I grew up watching this man give back to the community, and give himself to so many people, he set a great example for me, and an example that I've spent all my life, all thirty years I've got invested in it so far, trying to live up to. When I decided I was coming back home to Westmoreland, and moving into his house over here, and, uh, heard some of the things that were going on with the council, I decided that in his honor, it was the best interest to follow in his footsteps and try to give back to the people of this community. If you elect me to this council, you'll get a native Westmorelander who will do nothing but work every day that I serve this council, to give back to the people of the community. I'll work every day to invest as much time as I possibly can into finding you answers, not simply giving you an explanation of how things, or why things can't be done, I'll give you an answer as to how we can make things be done. If you vote for me to be a U-representative on to this council, you're getting someone who's not only investing for my lifetime spent in this town, not only for Coach Brown's lifetime spent in this town, for Mr. Creasy's lifetime spent in this town, I'm investing for the future of Westmoreland. I'm investing for my two young girls, that I want to have the opportunity to grow up in the beautiful town that I've come to learn to love over my life, and I want them to be afforded the same opportunities that I had afforded to me growing up, being able to come up in a small town and cherish the things that make me who I am today because of where I grew up. Vote for Alex Jones on November third, 2020. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Leith?
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. I'm a, there's been a lot of good questions here tonight, these are excellent questions, there's been a lot of good answers, there's been a lot of facts. There's been a lot of facts and there's been some, a lot of unfacts stated here tonight. For the last four years, I think this current council has done an outstanding job and I'm proud to be a part of it. We've made some difficult decisions. I keep hearing the town is going backwards or the town's not moving, but that's not the case, my friends. The town is moving forward. We, we've got, brought in two, two factories, got new businesses coming in. No, we're not growing like Galton, but I don't want to live in Galton. I want to live in Westmoreland where we grow slow and, and, and stay, have its hometown atmosphere. I agree. I too would like to see the businesses in town, downtown revitalized, but they're privately owned buildings and I don't know how we get that done unless that owner wants to revitalize it. I would love to see that happen. We've got excellent schools. Of course, I know the board don't have anything, council don't have anything to do with our schools, but I do support our schools strongly here in Westmoreland because we've got some good schools here in Westmoreland. I'm proud to say that some of our accomplishments over the last four years has been, we've been able to give our employees raises, some of them over $5 an hour raised so they can be in more competitive with the other cities because we was losing good, good officers to other cities and we had to get that pay up where they could be comparable with the other, with the other departments. We've, we've managed to buy new cars. I, I heard Mayor Kirkman say one time, one of our police cars pulled up at the stop sign and the, and the bumper fell off the car. So I'm proud to say we, we buy new cars because that officer needs to feel safe if he's in that car. So, and we bought new equipment for our city workers. I, I don't know where some of these people seen, our city workers throw stuff at their trucks, but now we've got an excellent group of public works. I feel like they take care of our equipment. I feel like they're doing an excellent job and they, they take pride in the new equipment. So I'm asking to be reelected for the next four years. Sometimes my family don't know why I've done that, but I do have a love for Westmoreland. My heart's here at Westmoreland and I want to see Westmoreland continue like it's continuing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leith. Before we dismiss, let me say a couple of things if I might be able to. First of all, I want to commend each of you for the courage that you exhibited in sitting before folks here tonight and appearing on Facebook Live and stepping forward in an effort to lead our community. You're to be commended for that and we greatly appreciate that. Our community obviously is at a crossroads, as is our nation as well, but our community's at a crossroads and that crossroads is a path that we can choose different directions to go on. I certainly implore and I challenge the three of you that will be elected to this position that you seek tonight to join with the two other council members who are with us here tonight, Ms. Wilkinson and Mr. Brown, and the three of you that will join with them and the mayor to continue that forward progress that the current council has made in so many areas. So I commend that current council and I commend you in your efforts, the three of you that will get elected to that, to continue that step forward. Certainly there have been some mistakes made along the way, as they often are in most anything that anybody tries to do, but you don't move forward without tripping up every now and then. We just have to pick ourselves up and, and move forward beyond that initial fall. And we have that opportunity. There are many, many positives with the city of Westmoreland and the people are certainly part of that. There are attractions that are causing folks to look at us, to move in from other places. Growth is on the horizon here. Those are going to be challenges that we have to address as we go along with those. And to move forward in a positive manner and to embrace the opportunities to disagree, but in the end, to benefit the citizens of this community are the opportunities that you seek tonight, and those are the opportunities I want you to embrace and we hope you will embrace as you are elected to the position. So my, congratulations to you on weathering this event tonight and good luck to you on Election Day in just a few days away and good luck in meeting the challenges of our community. One last thing I'll say, there's a group of folks that the chamber is endorsing and working with, and those folks are doing some of the decorating that you see in the downtown area of Westmoreland and in some of the crossroads here in town and so forth. Those folks are to be commended and that's an example, an example of when we work together, how we can benefit the community as a whole. And it challenges us to pick up on those types of things and move forward with that type of spirit. Thank you. Have a good evening.
I love you the luck. Just trying to do something here to bring people together. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to put you in the hot seat. You're going to be working with three of these members. Is there anything you'd like to say to them tonight?
I counted a privilege every day to be the mayor of this town. Not many people grow up in a town like Westmoreland or Portland or Mitchellville and say, "I'm going to be a mayor one day." Kind of like Mr. Smalling was saying earlier, you kind of are exposed to it. Mr. Brown's been exposed to it, several others. And, and, Mr. Carter, you, you're right. Your granddaddy, he devoted back to this town and even though he has been gone, now things like the new senior citizens center in Westmoreland became possible because of him. I will be working with five wonderful individuals regardless of who are the three that come off of this board or onto the board or elected by the people. We have to make decisions, it was said tonight, but a lot of times we know things that the citizens don't know and we have to make those decisions. That is where the council has to step forward and educate and communicate with all the citizens and let them know what is happening. I remember when I took a full-page ad out, I, I, I used about a month, two months of my salary as mayor to put the page in the paper to explain about what was happening with our water system. As we have moved forward on that, and, and I, I, you almost make me want to do a podcast to just say what all has happened in, in the last six years with our water and sewer system so everyone would know. But unfortunately, a lot of folks don't understand all the ins and outs, but TDEC, the Corps of Engineers, and BEPA, all, all the hoops that have to be jumped through to build a wastewater treatment plant or a new drinking water treatment facility. Westmoreland is very fortunate that we're a community of people that do work together. It was said that there's a split in the community and a lot of times that, that's like, you have a perfect church and everything's going together, but sometimes those churches split. Well, unfortunately, the city is not like a church that can split. You have to work together. You have to come together and you have to be able to, to make things reconcile to where it's a better future, not only for a young man like this, but, but like someone that's my age. You know, it, it is a great world that we live in. Coronavirus has affected this area just like it has all across the world. Our nation is in turmoil. You, you know, you hear about the things that are happening, but the three of these six people are going to be helping to make decisions for Westmoreland for the next four years. And those next four years will affect the future years and years down the way. I would have never thought in 2001, when I served my first stint on the council, that the decisions that I made at that time would still be around and be in, in effect today. So thank you for, for listening to you. Thank you, thank you for letting me talk. I love to talk. So y'all, y'all know my phone number and anytime that you want to call and speak with Mayor, my phone's always available. I get a lot of prank calls, so leave me a message if I don't get to it. This is a great town and it's going to get better and better. Thank you.
I will give him credit. I did call him while he was on his family vacation and it took him a couple of days, but he did call me back. I'd like to give a round of applause to all six of them here tonight for coming out, putting themselves forward. First of all, I want to thank my board for helping get this together. Jeff's kind of been wanting us to get technologically advanced. We're working on filming it going live. Me and Chris and Jeff has had plenty, I think we even slept the last two or three nights, but I'd like to give everybody, turn around and give Anna and Isaac and all their crew for helping get this together. I've been nervous as a cat all night and they keep telling me it's okay and I turned around a while ago and Anna's taking the camera off because it went down and she's still saying, "It's okay, it's okay." So I want to tell them thank you. I want to thank Lakeside Church for hosting it once again. And I ain't going to take up any more of your time. If I can get Brother Gardner to come up and give the dismissal prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for these neighbors that all joined tonight, that are watching live, that are here in person. What an honor it is to be together and be able to have a conversation and share our own views and know that we're trying to have the same direction and same purpose. Father, we thank you that this is a town that we want to raise our children. This is a place that we want to demonstrate the friendliness and the neighborliness. And Father, I pray that you will find a way to unify us and keep us moving forward, God. I thank you, Lord, that the greatest times are not behind, but are ahead. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.